It is six thirty. If I would join me in the pledge of, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dreyer, if you would take the role.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
Mr. U. Daly.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Harriman.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
The only additions that I have for tonight's council work session is under our committees. I want to add the Water District. As a discussion. Or add the Water District as under the discussion.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
Oh, under discussion. And it, it might make sense also. I would like to add council goals and review. Just so we discuss where we are.
Oh, yes, under the discussion lines.
If that's okay with me.
That is. Are there any other additions? For amendments to tonight's council work session agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
And before we vote on our meeting minutes from the December eleventh meeting, if our two new members would just abstain from the vote. But is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes?
Real quick, I'm gonna have to abstain.
Oh.
I wasn't at that meeting. So is three okay?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes?
Motion to approve council meeting minutes?
Second.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Abstain.
Mr. Lewis.
Abstain.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Abstain.
And now, moving into the swearing in of new and reelected members of council. Mr. Lafayette, if you would like to take the floor.
Sure. Sorry. I guess if everybody that is reelected or newly elected, if you'd please stand. And raise your right hand. We're gonna do the Animal House. I'll say your name, but please say your actual name instead of repeating what I say. I state your name.
Jody Tannen.
Sir, Kyle Harriman.
Do hereby solemnly swear. Do hereby solemnly swear. That I shall support the Constitution of the United States. And I shall support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And the Charter and all ordinances of the Village of Plain City. And the Charter and all ordinances of the Village of Plain City. And that I shall faithfully. And that I shall faithfully. Honestly and impartially. Honestly and impartially. Discharge the duties of members of council. Discharge the duties of the member of council.
Mayor of Plain City.
Of the Village of Plain City, Ohio.
Of the Village of Plain City, Ohio.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Congratulations.
And thank you to our friends and family for all being here for this event. And we appreciate all the time that you give of your schedules to allow us to be here. So, thank you. We are going to go into our meeting further on. You are free to stay, or if you need to go home for bedtimes and everything, we understand that too. So, thank you for being here. Okay, our next portion is the discussion and motion to combine the Economic Development Committee and Communications and Marketing Advisory Committee. This was kind of recommended by staff because we, having a clear vision for the Communications and Marketing Committee, but then also finding the members to make sure that they attend the meetings. And so staff suggested that we combine the two committees. There's also a lot of overlap in the goals of these committees. A lot of our communications and marketing is developed around future planning and growth of the village that is what a lot of residents ask about. So we think combining those two, the different spaces and members will be beneficial. And how many of our current committee members will be going over to? Two communications and marketing committee members are both willing to stay and they're both interested in joining the newly formed committee.
Do we get too many committee members at eight point, or is there no upper limit?
Economic Development, I think we had.
So right now, the Economic Development Committee has maxed out at five. But for the transition, we hope to leave that a little bit open ended. We said we prefer five, but we have a little room, we'd be willing to go a little bit above that. And that's more or less because we're trying to pull from different segments of the community. So we don't necessarily limit any new members who may want to join, say maybe here or something like that. So we're just looking for a little bit of flexibility, maybe some of the other committees necessarily doesn't have.
What I was gonna literally say is if they were interested in other committees as opposed to over staffing one and under staffing a different one, I would make it open to them. I mean, we'll take all the volunteers we can get, so.
Any other comment or discussion? Very.
You guys are two council members.
Yeah, I agree it makes sense for them to be combined.
I agree.
I think we, I think the Communications and Marketing has kind of struggled on where to actually, where we, where we fit, especially with the new, with this new economic committee. So it does make sense to combine.
And I do think, I do think that the work you guys did was awesome, like kickstart everything. Get the website going and everything. So you guys did great work on branding and everything, but a lot of that was like project based. And now it's kind of like we're past that.
Yeah, and I think it served a purpose when we needed it.
So is there a motion to combine the Economic Development Committee and Communications Committee and Marketing, Communications and Marketing Advisory Committee?
Motion to combine the Economic Development Committee and Communications and Marketing Advisory Committee?
Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
All right, we're moving into our annual reorganization and two thousand twenty-four appointments. First, I'll entertain a motion for council president.
I'll motion Michael Terry for council president.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Terry, no. Nominations are closed. We'll go ahead and vote on Mr. Terry being the council president.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Abstain.
Congratulations, Mr. Terry, on being the two thousand twenty-four council president.
No other nominees.
And the appointments I have for Board of Zoning Appeals end the following. I have Mr. Harriman, who served on planning and zoning. I have him to take over the council, member of Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Sins for Parks and Recreation Committee. Mr. Lewis Personnel and Finance C I P Committee. I am leaving the Design Review Board blank per our discussion on Monday's meeting. Fireboard, I have Mr. Terry. Communications and Economic Development Committee, I have Mrs. Ferguson. And our Rules Committee, we need to add one new person to the Rules Committee. Rules Committee, do you want to give an update at our stance and where we're at?
So, and it's, it's of my opinion, and Mr. Sins can chime in, that the Rules Committee, so we have a three-member committee, that's duty is to write rules for council. We are very close. I think there are two meetings left. One for us to get staff to kind of go through, write up, present to us what they think is best. And then us to submit that to Mr. Lafayette, and then him to review that and submit it back to the Rules Committee. So one for submission from staff based on a lot of draft work we have and one final. So anyone that would like to join us for this meeting, it should only be two meetings, I think. I think we're down to two.
Okay. Give it your fresh face.
Now, we were trying to make it two meetings, so any new members that come on board, try to keep it two.
Two or less.
Okay, so Mr. Harriman is going to add on to the Rules Committee. And I want to add one more position, C I C. This is something that staff is working on. And I have Mr. U. Daly as our rep. He already reps the Union County C I C. So I think he'll be a great fit for helping to start the Plain City C I C. And with that, those are my appoint, my recommendations for our committees for the year. Are there any concerns?
Are you okay being on fire?
I, I can do it. Mr. Daly, do you want to do it and then swap it to me? Once, when's, when's the C I C gonna? I, I don't want to leave you off a committee.
Yeah, I can, I can do the fire.
Until C I, until the C I C wants to switch over to it.
Yeah.
So then you won't have to.
Okay.
It's, it's no problem either way, whatever you do. When we think the C I C is gonna exist?
Friday, it's Fireboard meets first Thursday very much.
First Thursday?
Okay, I guess I'll, I, I, Mr. Daly, I guess I'll take Fireboard then until, and if it, three months from now, if we still want to see I C, you can have fire.
Okay, so Mr. Terry is gonna be on Fireboard, okay.
I didn't realize, I didn't know how long he was gonna go without a committee phase.
Right, right. And he's also attending the Union County. I'm not sure how often they meet.
The C I C?
Yes.
We meet about every, every third month, I think it is.
Okay.
We do, but this month they're meeting more often because they're actually, they, our seat on that C I C is a rotating basis every two years. Our two years is up. However, they're gonna try to do something to allow Plain City to sit on that on a continual basis. They want us involved in that, so. And I told them, I requested to put us on there as well. They said, would you like to? I said, yes. As Plain City, we want to be involved. Because they usually rotate that between different villages. And since we're growing, they want to know what's going on. And I thought it was important for us to be there.
Yes, thank you. Are there any questions about committee placements?
Motion to accept the mayor's appointments to committees?
Second.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
And the next three motions are to fill our Planning and Zoning Commission due to people turning off and being elected. So the first motion is to, and the, the following two, Ms. Davis and Mr. Price served on Design Review Board, and Mrs. McCoy has been on B Z A. So all of them have that background to serve on Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to appoint Jamie Davis to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
A motion to appoint Jamie Davis to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Is there a motion to appoint Ron Price to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
A motion.
Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
And is there a motion to appoint Diana McCoy to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Motion to appoint Diana McCoy?
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. U. Daly.
Yes.
And moving into our discussion items, we have the C I C presentation from Mr. Sanford.
Well, good evening, everybody, and congratulations to all of you. This is a great theme, I guess, to kick off the year, overcoming obstacles, development, business growth. Before I get into the C I C, I do want to mention that we are hosting a business breakfast roundtable. I think you guys all have fires at church stations. But that is February fifteenth, seven thirty to nine o'clock in the morning at Dirkachman. I would love to see as many and a few there as possible. We released the R S V P registration process just yesterday around noon. And we were already up to twenty inside closed business today. So we're gonna have good turnout, and we're looking forward to sharing our plans with our business community in the next month or so. So shifting back toward what we are now calling the Plain City Area Development Corporation, AKA the C I C. You may recall that I brought this to you originally back in May of twenty-three. And we kind of shelved it, you know, just depending on where we were with some of the updates and where we needed to go, or where we thought we needed to go. We're a little bit clearer now, so we are ready to proceed on this and hopefully you guys will enable that. A little bit of background, just in case, you know, you forgot, what are C I Cs? Basically, we're governmental, non-for-profit corporations that handle economic development for county, township, municipalities. So that's what we're looking at right now. There's actually two types. One is what we're trying to do at a municipal-based C I C, and then the other is county land pay. As I mentioned, they are created solely for the purpose of advancing, encouraging, promoting industrial economic growth. And they are part of the Ohio Legislature in action back in nineteen sixty-five. So we have over three here at C I Cs across state Ohio as of last year. They are really popular. They're utilized by a lot of local governments, again, to facilitate economic development programs. A lot of them do work closely with the state agencies or our regional partners, one Columbus or Chops Ohio. You may be familiar, of course, with the Union County C I C and the Madison County C I C, which we are representative of both. They serve as the lead economic development agents for both of those counties. Okay, so just to clear out any misconceptions, this is not to replace them or to change them in any way. This is to actually help them provide better service to us. Primary powers of the C I C, there's a lot here. But primarily for our purpose, I think one of the most important things we can do is a combined sell or lease property for economic development purposes. As part of a lot of C I Cs get their use, especially on the municipal level. But you can see there's a lot of other things they do. They can administer grants, they can contract the state, local, federal governments, and they can do basically anything that the state Ohio revise code allows them to do. Primary examples of benefit, and again, this is kind of tailored to how we potentially could utilize the C I C here in Plain City, would be if we by all chance decide one day to purchase a property for a actual park development, we could then in turn engage the C I C to transact that property acquisition. Not only when we would purchase the property, but then when we would sell it for future development. Also, as, as I think we all know, being a local government, we are exposed to open meetings in Sunshine Lots and all that stuff. Everything that we do is, is subject to public disclosure, which jeopardizes some of the economic development projects, the negotiations that go on. Now, if that would be handled through a C I C instead of a city, then that offers an extra layer of protection for the companies they're negotiating with in the municipality. They can also generate or accept funds that can be distributed for economic development purposes. A perfect example would be if we would do a facade replacement improvement program, which we talked about before. We could actually run that through the C I C a lot easily, or more easily. There are some C I Cs in Ohio that are traditional five oh one C threes, which are true nonprofit, charitable types. But most C I Cs actually get run through a five oh one C six. We would shoot for both, but it's really up to the government to decide where we get placed. Does Plain City need a C I C? Absolutely. It makes sense, especially with the growth rate that we're experiencing and will continue to grow. And also, as you know, we just passed or adopted the new economic development survey or strategy back in October. And the C I C can really help us execute that. But also, the C I C is a recommendation of that strategy, so it kind of fills in both parts there. And then there's also other goals of the strategy that the C I C can help us pursue, such as an industrial park. Our goals as a community, where I look at how we are handling economic development, is really prioritizing fixing our utility issues, our capacity, which we're doing a great job of. But also securing sites for business development. We've looked around, we have plenty of farmland, plenty of open land, but that's not billable. It's not, it's not conducive right now for our business development. So a role of the C I C would be to help us secure those properties, or at least work with utility providers or whatever, to make those sites ready for development. All of this goes back to building a foundation, a very strong foundation for future growth, which I do believe the C I C would be a big part of. Now, we're kind of getting into the weeds a little bit. This is, I think, where we left off the conversation last time. But we are ready to move forward with the creation process. So what that looks like is if you guys agree by Monday, or if we need a little bit of time to do it on the twenty-second of the next meeting, you can authorize, or you can authorize us to create that C I C. As part of that would be setting, setting the initial C I C board of trustees. Look at the initial board as a caretaker board that will be in place and basically get the full board out and running. We would then file the Articles of Incorporation with the Secretary of State's office. Then the C I C board, the true board, would appoint the meaning at large trustees. Then they would work on things like the code of regulations. And then eventually, a little bit down the road, the village would appoint the C I C as its economic development agent. So we would do that by agreement, and it would be approved by both the village and the C I C. This may change a little bit again with Mr. U. Daly's being appointed tonight. But what we had basically intended was to have this core original group serve as the caretaker trustees of Mayor Carney. It just sounds like you may be deferring that to Mr. U. Daly. We had thought about having Mrs. Ferguson on as a rep of the Economic Development Committee, and then Haley, Renee, and then myself as the staff reps for this initial committee. The recommended C I C structure, in the future, this would be a permanent board. No less than seven members and no more than thirteen. You have C I C, Union County is pushing thirty members now.
Their table's full.
Crazy. Thankfully, we do not need that kind of representation. I think there's room for us to grow. But for now, we would be very well equipped by these individuals serving on that board. Plus, we would have opportunities for non-village officials and employees to serve as well. Whether that would be residents, business owners, or school officials, et cetera. Ones that we want to be included in the economic development programming of the city. By law, this helps us out a little bit, but by law, at least forty percent of the C I C board has to be village officials. That helps us actually define what we're doing. We will have the authority, or Village Council will have the authority to approve its village representatives. So I know that was a point of discussion previously. But just keep in mind, you will have full authority to appoint individual reps at all times. And yeah, that was the recommendation to the Economic Development Committee. Long-term funding, this is, I guess, the intent, the difference that we're looking at between our C I C and perhaps a countywide C I C is we do not need staffing. You have me. We do not need massive amounts of money for the C I C. I think the budget for the Union County C I C is over three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And it was when I was there.
It's pushing.
We're looking at much smaller, at least to start at ten thousand, just in started funds. And I think that would be a fair allotment to really get us started throughout this year. In the future, if there are needs for village funding for the C I C, we can look at non-tax revenues such as penalty fees, which I think are tax bills, fees collected from the issuance of taxes. And this is actually a very popular way the C I Cs fund themselves. Or we could potentially even add special fees to develop an impact to structures. So we could do as set aside partially for the C I C. The final points, keep in mind that the C I C legally will be a separate entity of the village. It's not the village's C I C, it's a representation of the village, but it's not our entity. We will have a stake in the C I C, we will work closely, but the C I C will legally be a separate arm of the village. Again, the C I C will not replace or preempt the Madison County or Union County C I Cs. We work fine with them. They help us out, and there's no need for us to replace them. The C I C should operate in collaboration with Darby Township, State Districts, and other key players in our community. I'm really big on collaboration, and what we do as a village not only impacts us, it impacts our partners, the neighbors, and the community. So I would hope that the C I C would include others, those kind of progressive sales partners as well. Based on some feedback, I got some other municipal at C I Cs, is they had recommended that we don't actually use the name of C I C in order to prevent confusion with the county C I Cs. And after I got to thinking about this, does it make sense? So what we have come up with is just a generic name of the Plain City Area Development Corporation. Pretty standard across the board. You hear the Economic Development Corporation, C I Cs, they're all pretty much the same thing. Another point is that the C I C will be active as needed, okay? Including for, as I mentioned earlier, property transactions and other economic development initiatives. So it's not necessarily going to be handling tasks every meeting. There will be calls for special needs on occasion. We will try to meet at least quarterly, is what we're looking at. But if there are no agenda items, we're not in the position to make work for them. So they're, they're to help us, and I think, I think we will have fun with that. That being said, I wanted to take time to answer any questions that you may have. As far as anything, then if you guys feel okay with it, you're welcome to pursue this.
I'll be new, but with our C I C, or Area Development Corporation.
You will always hear me refer to it as a C I C.
But partnering, having like Mr. Daly with Union County, Madison County, would we still basically have a seat at those tables and work in partnership? Or would they go, hey, you're gonna be competing against the county? Would they not want to have that?
That's a great question, and I think that's a legal question. I had run that actually by the Madison County C I C, Dave Pell. Similar question though, but he did seem to think there was going to be apparent risk of conflict that they'd absolutely vote, would not solve. So I think what it would, where it would matter is we would be able to keep things confidential from other counties that we wouldn't want them to know if there is working on additional projects. So we'll still have to look into that a little bit deeper than I anticipated it should.
Yeah, Union County didn't. I, I expressed that we may, in the future, make this committee up or this corporation up. They didn't bat an eye at all. But then again, we've got a meeting, I think, next week. I can, I can pull their committee chair aside and talk to them.
From a functional basis, is this a ordinance? Is this a resolution? What would Monday be?
I believe this would be a resolution authorizing us to file for a C I C.
Perfect. And then, so that's why we can do it in one meeting. That's why you're saying that?
I was just planning on introducing it, I don't know the logistics.
Yeah.
So, and I know this was a concern that was expressed previously, I just want to understand it a little bit more. So it's a separate entity. Obviously, we maintain control by having forty percent at least of the board, and we control the funding. If a, if the C I C, for some reason, we wanted to get rid of the C I C, how would that process work? Would we just stop funding it?
So there's, there's different ways. I hope, I'll just be honest, I hope it doesn't come to that.
Yeah, of course not, yeah.
However, that would be worked out in arrangement with the C I C directly. If there would be that opportunity where the village is done with the C I C, no longer needs it, that would already be set in the agreement creating the C I C, the relationship with the village. no longer needs it, that would already be set in the agreement creating the CIC, the relationship with the village. So there would be an agreement that when we, um when we as the village appoint the CIC as the economic development authority, then that will be listed out and stipulated how that process would work.
Yeah, and I I really don't have that much concern. I think, I think the concern previously had been mentioned about like, we're over CICs. In this circumstance, we're controlling forty percent of the board, we're controlling the funding. I I don't see how that be a real problem. I don't know if anyone else has any concern. I don't really. I just wanted to hear a little bit about it, but I'm comfortable with it.
I think this is something that we need. The growth that we're having and we're seeing, and what we want to bring into this village, I think we need to have this. I've seen how it works on the Union County side, and it's amazing what they've done there. And we're at the infancy of that, if you think about it here. I, we're going to get to that, you know? We need somebody, we need a group that can collaborate and look at what's, what could be coming here, and how we can get it to work better for us instead of just a free-for-all, you know, developers coming in. I think this way, if we have this committee set up, not a committee, CIC set up, that we will be able to maybe control it a little bit, at least mold what we want this to look like, instead of just whoever comes in, I think. Am I right? That that's how we could work this?
Absolutely, absolutely. We, this would allow us to be more forward and forward-thinking instead of reactive.
Yeah.
And that's a follow-up to the village. We've had to be reactive in a lot of projects.
Things are happening so quick, and this, this will help us.
This allows us definitely to get out ahead of that. And if we do engage other partners, like the school districts or the townships and things, that really gives us a solid, a solid front to go out there protect our interests.
Yeah, I I think this would be a good time for it too, just with, you know, water passing, you know, we're going to have the development there. There, there's going to be some time with that. So like you said, if we can be out ahead of everything, because the growth's coming, so we have, I'd rather be prepared and planning for it instead of reacting to it.
How long's that approval process to be amended?
I hate to put a timeline on it, um because it it depends on our, how, how far along the CIC can work to get the Articles of Incorporation and everything up there. And um my intent would be to have this wrapped up in the first quarter. Like a reg, regular, um fully authoritative authorized entity.
And there's work the CIC can start prior to be going through, like, they got to be the people that put together the thing that we send to the state for approval. Not unlike the water board, where we had to like start the process.
Yeah. But sadly, we have um all the resolutions, the Articles, draft format, we have all that done. Keeping in mind that we did want to make sure that we don't linger this issue out there, but all of it's there.
So, so, and I get, I get all these things confused, so apologies. So the land bank, the housing council, all of those things, they are separate from this. They do not sit under this. They sit under, those are, sit under council, separate from this entity.
So it, from the discussion, it sounds like um we can move forward to put it on for first reading on Monday. Thank you, Mr. Sanford.
Appreciate it.
Our next topic is council retreat, and this was brought up um between myself and Ms. Lepton, and and Ms. Ferguson had mentioned about a time where we could come together and share historic knowledge um with our, with new council members and new staff and just things that, you know, I think it came up during um questions like Maple Street, why is that, um why is there no parking on Maple Street, and what was the thought process around that? So we're looking at Saturday, January twenty-seven. Um just want to make sure that that works well for everybody, and we would meet in the um Church Street facility.
At ten AM.
Ten AM. Is, yes, ten to noon. If that works for everybody.
So this becomes an open meeting?
It would be an open meeting, but it would just be kind of that.
Just discussionary.
Discussionary.
I'd prefer that day. Ten AM actually works for me. That's after basketball.
Is there rails? Does that work? Okay.
On that same topic, are you guys, is Mr. Lafayette uh going to do the new council member training thing? I know, I I I appreciate it, to be honest with you.
We, uh Ms. Lepton and I discussed that, so we plan on doing it. I forget which.
You can do it a half hour before then.
Yeah, I know they are the twenty second.
Ended up coming to a meeting.
I thought it was a, I appreciate that. And for the new council members, I know, like, some of this is just sharing, like, all amongst ourselves. But there was another thing that um Ms. Ferguson, Mr. Sins, and I did that was put on like a training on like Saturday that was really helpful. Yeah, municipal league. They just go, and they basically, uh, Mr. Lafayette gets up there and tells you how to not mess up, or if you mess up, who to go talk to.
Is, is there one of those this year?
Yes.
I, I, I.
Usually in March, I would say.
February, like, and I went.
It was a Saturday, I don't know.
Yeah.
Did you go the year that Shayna Pine and I, or went? I did, no, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't go there. I was out of town, so I would love if it's available this time around. I'd love to go to shit.
Yeah, I agree. I, I can go, I'll go, yeah. I like, it, I just, it was just good, because there's things that, you know, unfortunately, we don't go, you know, we don't have degrees in being a council person, so it was very beneficial for me.
Okay, so January twenty-seventh at ten AM at the church, the loft at Church Street. And there'll be reminders sent out. The next item, um water, our water district representative, um we will be needing to appoint a new Plain City representative, since Mr. Harman, it was our rep, and now he is on council. I think we have sixty days is what you said.
Yeah, it would be sixty days when send in the notice to the board there uh to replace the seat. And then that would be to finish the remainder of the term I was appointed for, which I'll double check the date, but I think it was like March twenty-eighth of twenty-five. So, so roughly about thirteen months or so, fourteen months to fill that remainder of that term.
And talking with Ms. Lepton um earlier today, we would advertise it um to see if anybody has an interest, and then um select the representative and and try to have that wrapped up by end of January, so that the new person can hit the ground running. Okay, and our next item.
Are there, sorry, are there, are there any other openings right now?
Oh, yes, um we have Parks and Rec. Um they, we have openings on that committee. Trying to think of, we just, um, planning and zoning. Board of Zoning Appeals, we will be having a member um come off in Feb, in February.
One spot there.
One spot.
For the one, for the, for the one that's coming up in February, does, so the individual that's on it doesn't want to stand? Do we know?
It, we, I, I think um that person has turned off, and it is Lieutenant Jacks with.
Okay, so, so we might want to start advertising that one too now, so we don't have any delay. And I'll start hitting people up for Parks.
And so those are our ones that we do need to have filled. And then council goals and review. Um, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, so I just brought this up here. Uh, so I think we, if I remember, Mr. Sins, we, so two pieces. Okay, Ms. Lepton. You guys, are you guys going through your guys' annual review of your staff right now?
Individual staff?
Yeah.
No, that's on their anniversary date.
Their anniversary, which her anniversary, right, is June. So we do that in June. So we had talked about doing it every half year. Do we want to do a review with Ms. Lepton? And obviously, it wouldn't be fair to Mr. Harman or Mr. Lewis, or do we think we're good on the year? I, what do you guys?
I think we had talked about this a little bit, and we talked about it being le, less formal at the mid-year, just a discussion, and less of a, everybody fill out a formal review. So um I'm good with uh with still having that, a, a discussion.
I think feedback would probably be.
So maybe we get something like that, either in executive session, one of these meetings in January. If we don't have to prepare anything, I mean, we can do it whenever. Again, it's kind of unfair to you guys, but you guys can come, like, um. So that was the one thing I was wondering about. I, I, and it's mostly in fairness to Ms. Lepton, like, I don't want to, I don't want to leave it hanging, like, you, like, waiting for it. But yeah, so the formal one in June, this one's just, hey, you give us feedback, we give you feedback in an executive situation. And then, um, I, I guess with this council retreat, do we want to, is that a good opportunity to kind of, maybe we set all the goals out? So the way we do it for the council members is about, probably for the last two years, we've set goals. It helps give direction to Ms. Lepton and them, uh especially in the summer, because that's what helps build the budget. So the budget's set with, hey, we want connectivity, so build the budget to have some plans around that. So then we reviewed it in June. Um, I, I think what maybe would be a good idea would be if we send it out to everyone, and then you guys can review, and we can look at them, and if we want to add any, we can do it at that retreat. If it's an open meeting, we can, we can add. I feel like that's a perfect opportunity to be like, hey, let's add this or add that.
I think it's perfect. I think this is something we should do every January. You thought, have a retreat, set these goals, do, do a reviews or whatever we need to of the old goals, set the new ones, so we can jumpstart for the year. And then, like you said, in June, we come back and review it again, because we wait till February, March, and you only get two months to get some of these goals done, and June reviews, like, we didn't have enough time.
That, and that's, that's why.
And we also set up what we can focus on for the year too, because that's what we did last year with a lot of these goals, where we set up the work sessions to what we wanted to discuss. And I think that's, I think it's a great opportunity for us to do that.
Yeah, that's why I added it tonight, just to be like, hey, let's talk about it. So if everyone's cool with that, we'll send them all out to everyone, and maybe, um, we'll come in on the council retreat, we'll have a refresh list. Usually, just so you guys know, usually there's like, I don't, we'll say ten on there. Three are like short-term, in-year. Three are like midterm, two to three years, and three are more like aspirational. Unfortunately, they're, they're, they're hard to nail down sometimes. They're, there are things we know we want to do, but we don't know how to put a project plan on them, so. Cool. That's all I had. I just wanted, I just wanted to bring that back up to everyone.
No, that's a good refresher, and the retreat will be perfect for that. Anybody, anyone else have any comments on the council goals? All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned.